We have nine o'clock. Forest Service update, Carol Johnson and Eric Thomasek, and Eric must be on a fire, huh?
I think, yeah. Probably what happened, I forgot to tell him, and I don't know with transitioning back after he's been gone on his detail, I just got thinking about it. He would not have known that we were meeting today.
He contacted me.
Did he?
Yeah, so he knows today's schedule.
Okay.
So maybe he is out of there. But just so you know, we did have communication.
Is so is somebody from Nine Mile coming, do you know?
No, he asked, he was going to come.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, because I've been asking about that Garden Point Fire, but maybe he knows something about it.
Yeah, I don't know too much about that, Roman, just because I've had enough in my own back door to try to keep track of.
Yeah.
So we've been pretty consumed by fire for the last two weeks, obviously, but at the minute, on the Superior Ranger District, we're in good shape. We have the Deep Lookout Fire, we transitioned to, from the Type 1 team yesterday to a Type 3 team, and Teo DeJondo is going to be the Type 3 trainee. He went up and went around it yesterday and told me, I don't think he could find any smokes in it. It's, it's pretty well, I won't say it's out, but there's probably some heat in there that they're going to continue to work. And then they have, I think Teo estimated there's probably six to eight miles of hose up in there.
No, no.
There was a lot of perimeter on that fire, just the way it had a lot of fingers and, and the way it burnt, and so their biggest job will be, that he's going to be working on is with the crew up there, is just starting to get all that hose cold and put into sling bundles, and I think there was about 15 pumps up there because it was steep, so they had relays in there to get the water up. And so just getting all the pumps and all the hose off of theirs probably, and then having some people gritting it for any hot spots in there is kind of what that operation will be. I feel pretty fortunate that we got that one in the condition that we did, because that could have been pretty nasty if that would have gotten really established down on the Nine Mile side and got into some heavy timber.
Where would that be approximately on the Nine Mile side? Like by how far the Nine Mile Valley, if it would have come over, would it be approximately next to, oh, which creeks are up there on that side?
Let's see, without, look over that, Laurie, where order to come over.
I just didn't know there were a lot of houses.
Yeah, there is residents down there at the base of the hill, I do know that.
No, this is the.
That is, it shows, isn't it? But I do know there was residents at the base of the hill where it came down on private, would have met private there. Other than that, on fire, we did pick up a couple more lightning holdovers up, up there by, in Sunset, off of the state line where that lightning belt came through, and then we did have a little fire start out here on Mullen Road East, just past Coleman's Corner, what we call Coleman's Corner.
About right at the mouth of First Creek there, that's what Jim Ward said.
But that wasn't lightning, was it?
Yeah. What?
That wasn't lightning, was it?
No, it was.
No, that was a human, human caused fire there.
So arson paper.
Mm-hmm. Seems to be that favorite little spot out there, doesn't it?
Yeah, so anyway, responded to that and got that under control. The Dolly Fire, which is with the state line complex managed by the Southwest Montana Team that's camped in St. Regis, but that's managed on the Idaho side. That fire was fairly active yesterday, I saw some actual footage of it late yesterday afternoon, and they tried to get some fellers in there yesterday, but due to the fire activity, I was told at the planning meeting last night that they had to pull them back out, so they really haven't had much ability to work on it. And even though we have a Type 2 team in St. Regis, they have not received very many resources. They have a task force of heavy equipment working down on the Idaho side, working off of that tumble-down fire, trying to build some contingency lines around it. They have a masticator, I think they have a dozer, and I'm not sure what other equipment they have, but as far as crew people, they really don't have very many crews. And they thought they were getting a hot shot crew yesterday, and then they were diverted before they arrived to go to some other initial attack somewhere. So they've had a hard time getting, getting any resources. And as the Type 1 team told us when they left, that resources are getting more difficult to get, so I just think if we get another, if should we get another bust of lightning, we might not be so fortunate to get a team quickly or to get crews, so it may be more difficult to get out. You just, you just don't know what you're going to have, because there's so many fires going now that are getting big and are threatening structures, that sort of thing, that are taking high priority. And I was talking to Alan Brockway, who, he has his engine here now, but he was down in Wise River in Wisdom, and it was burning in that dead lodge pole, and I think he had to stand down because he lost some crew members or something for his engine. And those, those fires were still, I won't say they were small, but now those fires have grown to, I think the one in Wisdom I saw on the TV was 23,000 acres, another one five, and they were looking at possibly evacuating some residents down there in the Wise River area, whether it was in some of the rural area or what, I'm not just sure, but he said those, look to him, like, you know, those are going to be on the landscape for a long time, they're not going to be able to get those out anytime soon. So we're really going to be competing for resources if we, when we get our next, if we get another lightning bust.
How many aircrafts do we have? Or do they go with that team?
They, once we lose the Type 1 team, though, most of the aircraft will go, Duane, and so there again, you know, you don't know what aircraft you'd be able to get, and as the fuels continue to dry, you know, they're going to be, it's going to be pretty explosive. And one of the things, you know, with the Dolly Fire, right now, the state line area is still pretty green up there, so we're hoping that the state line will hold that fire and keep it on the Idaho side, but as that fire begins to pick up momentum and has the ability, if we would get wind, to spot over the state line, then as Jim Ward and Lori Cotter have explained to me, which makes sense, is as those state line high elevation fuels dry pretty soon, you know, maybe two weeks from now, they'll carry fire. And so pretty soon, as that works down that drainage, then it would be a concern to us. So just something that we're going to have to keep an eye on with, with that fire. Just going to a few other things, and then I'll come back to fire just a little bit, but I can say on Eric's district, they had a McPine Timber Sale, and that was in the Soldier Butler Project area. They awarded that sale, and it went to Pyramid Lumber. Pyramid, Sun Mountain, Idaho Forest Group, and TRL all submitted bids on that sale, so it's pretty good to have four bidders.
Yeah.
I think Sun Mountain was the next highest, they were pretty close to, pretty competitive with Pyramid. Let's see. Up here in the Barber Timber Sale, which would be up in Cedar Creek, Thompson River Lumber has that sale, and they haven't done a lot up in there, but they are getting ready to do some line sets in there, and I think they were having a pre-work meeting today, and so there could be some delay in traffic getting to Missoula Lake. So we'll have to, when we find out exactly, there's some units there along the road where they'd be setting up some line machines with tailbacks, and if they did, there could be traffic delays. It'd be open on evenings and weekends, but during the, during the day could be some delays, depending on which units they really choose to work in. On the personnel side of things, Bobby Henderson, if anybody knows him, he's, works in our fire section. He and his family live here in Superior, he has taken a law enforcement position in Dickinson, North Dakota. And so they want him to start probably mid-August, but I'm going to try and keep him here through August, because he's a critical piece of our, of our fire section, hopefully to hang on to him. If you haven't heard, Eric Thomasek will be leaving the Lolo.
Oh, I haven't heard.
Okay. Eric has taken a position as an assistant director in planning and monitoring, and I think it, I think he's going to be out in Portland. I believe that's the region that he's going to.
Why would he want to go to Portland?
And that's kind of what he was, took a detail in. He would stay through the fire season at Nine Mile, so there wouldn't be that disruption. He has accepted this other position, so Carolyn will be doing an outreach, probably detailing somebody behind him, and then there'll be an outreach for permanently filling that position.
Huh.
And then, of course, if you don't know, Jim Ward, Fire Management Officer, is retiring the end of November, and we will be advertising that position here soon, so that we have someone in place shortly after he leaves that position. And Jim is up against the mandatory retirement age for, for fire, for firefighters, so he has to retire out of that position, but will be a tremendous loss for the, for the district, because he's very knowledgeable with fire management and has been a great leader.
Been here a long time.
Knows the district, he's been here on the district probably twenty.
Gets along with everybody well.
Yeah, knows everybody, and has worked so much with the LEPC, and has really, really been a stellar employee for us. So he'll be missed, that's for sure.
So he's done November, and when's Thomasek done, you said?
Um, Eric, he just, Eric said he would stay through till the fire, through the fire season here, so.
December.
Well, it could be.
I wouldn't doubt that.
It might be, Dwight.
Yeah.
So I'll hate to see Eric moving on, I mean, I'm glad if that's what he wants to do, but he's been a good neighboring ranger to me, I will say. We've, we've worked well together, and he's always been, trying to share whatever we can. The Quartz Guard Station, I think I mentioned to you at one of the other meetings, we were looking at possibly conveying that site, we don't use it. So we're working with the regional office, trying to move that project along. Conveyance of federal land does not go quickly, as anybody knows, but one of the things, when the region got looking at it, is that piece, we were looking at conveying about 30, 35 acres, it'd be the buildings, and it's kind of a little triangle piece in there that goes down to the river, and there are some encumbrances on it, as far as there's easements and things through there. And so the regional office is asking the forest and myself, is with the encumbrances on that piece of ground, would we really want to convey it? And they're thinking with, maybe it wouldn't bring all that much with the encumbrances on it, or would we rather just get rid of the buildings that are there and keep the land? And so I haven't had a chance to really dive into that, but here in the next week is something that I'll have to study that a little bit and, and do a response back to the regional office.
So when you do the conveyance, you'll be trading back and forth, is that what you're looking, or selling, or?
We would sell at Duane, and it would be an online, now how they do it, it's an online sale, and so like you have 30 days, and it'd be like online, almost like a silent auction, if you would.
Maybe they should try it with the encumbrances on there, and just have like a minimum bid of what they, because that, that land is just so handy, because it's accessible right off the highway. I can see somebody, you know, purchasing it, becoming a taxpayer with it, you know, with a house, or, it's a, have a usable function, rather than just get rid of buildings and still have it be federal piece of land, but.
Okay.
I don't know, can they do that? Can they put, we need at least this much to make it worth it.
I think they, I, you don't have to look into that, but you'd think they'd have some kind of minimum bid, and I know we've had at least even some local interest, let alone when you put it out on the internet for a bid, that, you know, you, it would be available nationally.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll see where we go with that. So that's something that I have to do, and, and then looking up Flat Creek, it came right during the fire bust, and I didn't have time to deal with it, was the Asarco Land Trust that has those parcels, and I think I visited with you about it before, but at one time, they wanted to sell, you had to take everything. And the, the forest wasn't interested in taking all of those properties because of any future liability of, because it's not 100% cleanup up there, and certainly we weren't interested in taking that up or add it in, in the seepage up there. But now I understand that Asarco is willing to sell parcel by parcel or break it up. And, and there are people, I think there's some local people that are interested in some of those parcels, and certainly some of the real estate companies, I think, have contacted Asarco, wanting to be able to either brokers buy it, or list it, or whatever, however they want to do that. And so that's just something I, I really haven't looked into, I don't know if the forest, you know, if we purchase something, we don't, we don't just have a pot of cash, there's a process we have to go through to. So I don't know if, if the government, if we're, we don't really have a need for it, I don't think our access up in, through there with the roads, I, I think we have access regardless of who owns those properties, but I need to do a little more research there as well. Mike, Wayne, been seeing a lot of you guys. And then going, talking about the Red Pill Organization, there have been some, there was a couple active shooter incidents in North Idaho within the last week, I don't know if you've heard about them. There was one over at Kellogg, where somebody was near a hella base and started firing a gun in the air, and the person was arrested without incident, but they had to get people into a secure area. And then I was told, over at Camei, right near the Forest Service compound there, in a hotel across the street from it, there were three fatalities. There was an active shooter, and I believe the shooter then took his own life.
And you were related to that festival?
Uh, no.
Oh, oh.
Those were totally, just very single incidents, not related to each other, but just happened, you might say, in North Idaho, all within just a few days of one another. And so has, has the, the team, the, the team out of the Southwest concerned? And so they've been concerned about the Red Pill, or that's going to be in the park on Saturday, and, and so I called Denley Logie just to find out a little bit more information, and didn't talk to him personally, but he returned a phone call and said, as far as he knew, it was going to be, you know, they're having a barbecue and some music and, and meetings, but certainly didn't believe that there would be any type of violence or anti-government or anything like that displayed there. But I think the, the Southwest team, just not feeling comfortable, are, are going to move the people there in the camp over to Plains first to sleep Saturday night, and then they will return. They just don't feel comfortable there, but, and that's their, their own, you know, it's up to them. COVID, as you, we've all seen, seems like COVID is ramping right up on us here. So one of the things for fire camps, and we are now required to wear masks in a fire camp unless you're actively engaged on the line, and I don't know, I, I think we're going to see some more restrictions even probably coming to our Forest Service offices, as far as, depending on where the COVID numbers fall. So be aware of that. And then a couple other things I have. In between the fire activity, where people are just continuing to work on Superior North up here, we are supposed to have our scope, proposed action and scoping out by somewhere in September, but with people being pulled off on fire, I think we may be delayed with that project, because like Carly Anabali, who's, needs to get up there and look at that, she's been helping with initial attack, and most of my people have been on fire or standby or whatever, and haven't been able to get up there. She's also working over in Red Bull, doing the prescriptions for the first two sales that would come out of there, and we have a marking crew coming the first part of August under contract to help do marking in Red Bull, getting the boundaries of the units, everything put together there. Cruzan, the Cruzan package was at the SO, it's advertised in the Missoulian, I think, yesterday, and the bid date for that is August 24th, is the bid opening for the Cruzan sale, so hopefully we'll have some, some, some good bids for that. Again, my, my pre-sale people have been working up in Fregus, which is the Coal Creek area, that'd be the first sale that we hope to sell out of Red Bull, trying to get that prepped and, and ready to go. Um, let's see. We still are on the final stages of some of the NEPA for Red Bull. Pat Partika is doing the final edits for responding to the objections that we had on it, and then we're just waiting for a final consultation from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And we've been told that Sawmill Petty is their first priority, and when they finish that one, then they will start on Red Bull, so I don't know when we're going to get the final, their opinion on it, or what type of mitigations, or what we're going to have to do there. I'm just hoping it doesn't burn before we get through it.
Yeah, that's my concern.
Don't be talking like that.
Oh. I think as Lori Cotter said in all the meetings, you know, that's kind of an area that lightning has a history of wanting to track through, coming down the Joe. This weekend, we have an ATV ride, the West End is, West End ATV Group is putting on a ATV ride, and I think it, it starts up there in the West End, goes up over 12 Mile, down in, onto the Plains Ranger District, and then I think comes down the Thompson-D'Borgia Road, or no, comes up, back up over Taft Summit, past the Snowmobile Shelter, and then down, back down toward Hogan and D'Borgia.
Carol, when you guys have a large event like that involving a lot of your forest land and roads, do you guys require those event organizers to have, apply for like a permit?
Yes, they have to have a permit, they have to pay for it, and I think Heather puts in there, they have to have sanitary facilities, so they have porta-potties set at different stations.
I see.
Where they don't have bathrooms unless they're at a, well, like if they go to stop one of their card draws or whatever is at the Oasis, of course, they have restrooms, but on the forest route, they're required to have porta-potties set at different stations. Obviously, no off-road riding, adhering to Stage 2 restrictions as far as smoking, that sort of thing, and Nancy Parkin's going to ride the route today to check it for safety, that sort of thing, make sure the toilets are in place, and then Heather will have her folks, and they'll be helping monitor that as well during the ride. And another thing, just to maybe be heads up about, is the Southwest team that's managing the fires there in Idaho that are stationed in St. Regis, is a little bit of starting to ask about closing the North Fork of the Little Joe Road to control traffic. And my answer at this time is, if you close our side, then it also needs to be closed on the Idaho side, that, I think they call it Highway 50 that comes up. And what, what I'm hearing from the fire people is that there's a tremendous amount of traffic on that Idaho down along the St. Joe River with recreationists, ATVs, the campgrounds are full, and I think they've had some near misses as far as with ATVs, fire traffic. And so not really wanting to close the Little, the North Fork of the Little Joe, because there is so much through traffic, but I wouldn't close, want to close our side unless they close the Idaho side, but just so you kind of have a heads up, and I'll keep you posted if the request becomes we need to close it.
Yeah, let me know, and then I can post it online.
Yeah, and we're also supposed to be getting the fire team approved and the buying team to do mag chloride on that, just for, for the fisheries protection.
On the North Fork?
On the North Fork of the Joe, they're going to do dust abatement, so. Talked to Nate Kegel this morning, he hadn't heard anything on it, but he, he gave all the specifications of what we would do if we were to do it. Hopefully we'll hear some more. And that's kind of what I know is going on at this time in my world.
I had Mike come in because they were, his last meeting was talking about that building up, that communications building up at Lookout, so I thought it would be a good time to, since you were here.
Oh, yeah, glad, and I forgot about that, Laurie. We do know, Mike and Wayne, that that building where all the communications are is in bad shape, and I, the roof, and I talked to Robin Jemine, who does our special uses, and one of the things that we are going to look into is, instead of trying to repair that building, because it's a historical building.
Right.
And you run into, you have to follow historical guidelines, and you have to go through SHIP-O, and I don't know what all the process is, but it can be somewhat time-consuming. And Robin mentioned the possibility of, of, if the users would just get one of those small.
Shipping containers.
Because you don't take up very much space, so it could be just a smaller shipping container, and I And I think she's seen those used on other electronic sites. And one of the things that she was going to look into is how do they ventilate those so that you don't get moisture inside that would raise havoc with the electronic equipment? But there has to be a way because we've seen them used.
Right. And that's fine, and we were told that and we were kind of leaning towards that. But what we, we just like that building, it's a beautiful building. And it's just the roof and the one corner of the roof, right?
Do you see the pictures?
I haven't seen pictures, Wayne, no.
So there are a couple of these deals missing off of the peak.
Okay.
And then that side's broken down. And then that's the door into the main room. And the concern is that electronics are sitting down, right, down lower than the main room. And you can see where water's leaking in.
Mm-hmm, in the big room.
Right.
Yeah, I've been in that, not as recent, but I know you occupy just a small piece.
Yeah, just us and MHP, I think, as in there.
Right.
Isn't that Department of Transportation and?
I don't know, I think they're in another, but there's a couple of different buildings up there, different radios.
So here's a couple of different options that we, you know, we can look at what it would take, what we have to do to repair the roof on that building. We could look at getting the shipping container if the users were to get one. We wouldn't have to do any NEPA or anything, we just put it in there. Then we'd look at probably doing something with that building.
We can talk to MHP and go with them and again, of course, bug the commissioners for money. And we can see how much a small shipping container would cost, whether we lease it or buy it.
Good thing would be to talk to Jerry Doctor because he can go through, because they've got a couple down there at the fire station and there's, you know, he orders stuff all the time. You know, some, you know, government type things. So he would be a good one to, if you're going to go to the shipping container idea.
And then your antenna, I mean, your antennas and everything are good there. And then another option that I think.
We just got to get power to the shipping.
Yeah, and then the other option that Robin was going to look at is that the forest service radios, we are in a little, small, little green building up there closer to what used to be the old AT&T building that Ted Ryan owns now, that big building. And she was going to look and see how much room is in where we have our radios because you guys don't take up very much room. And if there was room in our building, then that would be another possibility would be of moving the highway patrol, et cetera, into the same building that our radios are in. And I don't know how much, Robin didn't know either, Shannon looked in there, but that was, that's another possibility.
DOT might be, DOT and MHP might be in the same building with you too, so that'd be.
Well, I know MHP is.
And DOT has a radio up there too for their trucks, so.
Yeah, that's how we found it because we had to talk to the MHP guy that, that was our last.
Just saying, one more agency that could help pitch in on.
Right, that's what I said, we bugged them for money too and helped them help us. And the fires, we've already talked to fire departments, they're going to help us.
Yeah, West End Fire has just gotten a grant for a new repeater and they were wanting to put it in that building. Our stuff's in power as well.
Okay, so that'd be one more.
Right.
So we, so we do have some options that we can look at.
We'll meet, we'll meet here next month and talk about it and figure out, because I think the radio guys will be back next month, our radio guy is Bob Stein.
And whatever we do, we'd want to do, you know, before winter starts to set in up there, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, okay, cool. We're going to split, we'll be back at 10.
All right.
Okay, I just thought since Carol was here, you know, it would be a good time to get together.
Yeah, because I forgot about that, but we talked about it the other day.
Yeah.
So we're going to look and see how much room is in our building. And then if you guys look and see what's the cost of the shipping container and then I'll look into the process of repairing the roof. The only thing with that building, you know, because you do get into having to go through SHIPBO. And if you have one roof repaired, then where's the rest of it going to be? Down the road, I don't know.
Well, it's an even building, it'd be nice to fix that roof. I mean, even if you get, like you said, if it's historic, it'd be nice to fix the roof so the building lasts longer.
It was, it's a good building, I mean, if you look at all the.
The foundation is good, it's just the roof.
The brickwork and the foundation and everything is solid, so.
Waste of DC lets that.
And it's a lot, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of space in that building.
Absolutely.
It's a big building, so I'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
See where we could go, okay, thank you, guys.
So Carol, I had one more to add to your to-do list if you're, next time you're in Missoula at the office or whatever, but the, you know, the whole issue with the state line and the ski area and the taxes going to the other county and it's, you know, the state line really is in a different spot, blah, blah, blah. One way it might be a quick fix is if, I was going to ask LeAnn Martin, but she wasn't at the Forest and Counties being we were at, but maybe you can ask LeAnn Martin to see what does the region or the low-low, how do they figure on our pilt payment? And maybe that boundary line is in the correct spot based on pilt and that would be just an easy fix for us to show the revenue people and Idaho people that this really is a state line. Not only does do the Departments of Transportation not start making new highways and roads right here, but they also, the Forest Service pays pilt based on right here. You know, because that's a federal geological map, obviously, that they use for pilt payments, I assume. And so maybe that would be something easier than trying to get the congressman involved to do a new survey and we just go by the old survey because it's a U.S. geological federal map based on forest payments.
Okay, I know Denley, of course, has long been interested in that. And I was planning on, and he had requested a meeting with Carolyn Upton and.
Oh, that's who it would be, not LeAnn, it'd be Carolyn.
And then she'd go to LeAnn probably about it. And Carolyn was planning on coming out and coming up to our Passport and Time Project at Savannak. And I, and I had thought that when she was that close, if Denley could have come up, we could have easily went up to Lookout Pass so that she could see what Denley was talking about with the state line. But with the fires breaking, she wasn't able to come to Savannak and of course, has been totally consumed with managing those. And so I told Denley, we'll have to try to reschedule and he understood. But that kind of was the plan was when she was at Savannak, when we finished there, go on up to the Lookout Pass and have Denley explain a little bit of the history there and what the county's trying to do. But she got diverted by all the fire activities, so we'll have to schedule again because she does want to come out and she did want to come to one of my monthly meetings. I think she was planning on coming this one or, because she wanted to meet before, again, with you folks just to touch base and didn't have the opportunity, but got to meet Lori the other day when she stopped into the, the meeting there over at the Fire Hall when she was out here. So we'll, we'll have to get that rescheduled. Whenever things slow down, that might be late fall by now.
I know every time I go take, go over to Idaho or you start down, I mean, it's so obvious where the Idaho Highway Department starts and Montana starts and.
Yeah, it's got to get cleaned up, there's just, there's no question about it there, so. So anything else, any other questions? I was looking at our next meeting, maybe August 27th, if you have that open on your calendar.
Let's see, we've got approval and adoption of the budgets at nine. And then toss right after that.
How about maybe the week before that, Lori?
20th?
Would the 20th work, August 20th?
Wow, looks to me like it would, you can just move Mike to 10 and have you again at nine.
What time do we finalize the budget?
That's not till one.
Oh, that's at one, okay.
August 20th at nine o'clock. Okay, unless we're knee-deep in fire and then, of course, then I'd have to cancel, but. We can at least tentatively plan that.
So did you go ahead and make those changes?
And I appreciate, you know, all the support at the, with the planning group, the LAPC stakeholders meetings. And then we had a public meeting just when our fires were pretty active and we had 56 people attend and that was the most participants of any of the meetings in Plains, Thompson Falls or Nine Mile.
Plains had 13.
Really? Very appreciated.
Yes. Well, you do a great job, Carol.
Yeah, you do, Carol.
Well, I appreciate that, but I think, you know, it really does help.
Well, your whole team.
When the teams see, you know, that people are interested and they care, that just, I think it helps. I think it really does help.
Yeah, no, well, your whole team, I mean, they got right on, you know, because I asked and there was like 18 fires and they got right on and had 10 of them out. So it really says something about your group.
Now, they get, they, Lori Carter, Teo, Jim, they try to get resources moving quickly. Because good initial attack is your only hope of hanging on to anything.
Yeah, Kelly was almost headed out before he got the dispatch from Missoula, so.
You got to get access and get into them, so. Well, we hope we can keep the lightning at bay and help what we can.
So we can have a smoke-free fair, right?
I'm just hoping that the COVID doesn't really rarer its head and.
Yeah, we had 28 new cases, 11 new cases yesterday, 28 total now. And it's this Delta variance is.
I see that, that they have it in the county, so. You know, we went through the worst of, what we thought was the worst of it and Mineral County did so well. And now, boy. Well, I guess all we can do is get it all.
All right, well, thanks, Carol.
Yeah, thank you.
10 o'clock and we've got Sheriff Talk with some agenda things, call-out time, clarification and dropping cert pay and getting 93% of sheriff pay.
Yeah, so we got the email about the call-out stuff and the deputies had brought up several issues with what they believe in. Ryan, he's the Sergeant of Patrol, so he's going to speak on kind of the deputy's behalf of that and what their argument is towards that. And then the cert pay, you know, we were, at the time, because there was, that law had been passed, cert pay was all we could do to give him a little kicker for being a sergeant. But now we can go up to 95%, but that's, and that was made for promotions. But as a sergeant, I told him, you know, let's see if we can get 93% for him. And he did some math and figuring and he'll speak on why he thinks we should do that, which I encourage and I think we should do that. Take the cert away, the Sergeant's cert away, we gone, and then he'd just get 93% instead of.
90, are you at 90 now?
He's at 90 now.
I'm at 90 now.
Everybody's at 90, except me and Wayne, yeah.
What's Wayne at?
Well, he's at, I think, 95, but in October, by state law, he has to go to 98.
Are you going to fight that law? I'm just kidding. Being that you're a law man and all, you probably have to enforce that law, don't you?
Yeah. And then, yeah, so. So I guess he can start with the call-out pay and go from there.
Okay, so, I mean, just going through this, I just highlighted a few things as far as the county recognizes that it may be necessary for various departments to require employees. Third paragraph, it says some employers shall be required. With the sheriff's office, we're not required to be available, we don't get on-call pay. So as in Highway Patrol, same kind of situation is, you know, sheriff says, call somebody out. Just because they call me, I don't have to come out. If I decide not to come out, then they go, then they go down the list. So the required portion, I think the sheriff's office is super unique in that, in that, you know, idealistic thing is, you know, we work seven days a week, nights and holidays, crazy hours. And so I did some investigating, of course, you know, because when this got brought up, you know, I brought up the required thing to the sheriff saying, if we're required to, then, you know, we need to look at like an on-call pay, just as Highway Patrol doesn't pay their guys on-call pay because they're not required. MHP for the last, I've been told up to the last 20 years has been doing the three-hour call-out. It is part of their union contract. And, you know, speaking with Sergeant Smalley and several other sergeants that I know, captains, their big thing is, you know, yes, it's part of their union contract as it's, you know, part of our past union contract that we've been, you know, in, in good faith, we've been, you guys have been, you know, covering and allowing us to have that. They said the big thing for that is, you know, if I get called out at 2:00 and I'm only out till 2:45, I'm now accountable for those three hours. So if I go back to bed at 2:45 and I get called back out at 3:00, I have to come back out because I'm getting paid those three hours. It's kind of like, you know, being on-call and getting on-call pay per se. So, and if I don't come back out, then the sheriff comes and talks to me and says, hey, I paid you for those three hours, you had to come out. And, you know, I can face, you know, disciplinary action from the sheriff because I was getting paid for those three hours. If we do, I mean, the $75, I mean, and the deputies may slap me, people may slap me for this, but if we do the $75, okay, that's automatic, right? If we get called out, it's automatic 75. If we're out three hours, then we're going to be making almost twice the money. So, because at the end of our pay schedule, you know, we'll have, like, let's say if we work the three hours, then we get three hours of overtime at the end of our 40 hours and the $75, correct?
Right, you get paid your hours.
So we'll almost be getting paid $200 rather than the $99 if we work three hours. So let's, I'm just giving, for instance, I mean, I don't care who knows how much I make. I make $21.06, so at overtime, I make about $30 an hour. My three-hour call-out, it's like $93 to cover my three hours. If I come out and work three hours and get, you know, and get the $75 call-out, I'm making $170 instead of the $90.
You get paid your hours, you get $75, plus you get your hours, which probably will then put you into overtime, which you're going to be getting the three hours overtime anyway. So you're going to be making $75 more than what you would have been on a three-hour call-out.
Yes, but, but here's, here's the other kicker is now I'm only responsible for the one hour and nothing is holding me accountable if another call-out comes out in a half hour or an hour. Yes, but, but here's, here's the other kicker is now I'm only responsible for the one hour and nothing is holding me accountable if another call-out comes out in a half hour or an hour.
So, yeah, so what happens, that's the question, if you call them out and they only work an hour and they go home, they get the hour pay and seventy-five dollars. Now, let's say a half hour later, they get called out for another incident, are you paying them another hour and another seventy-five?
If it says it's two, if, doesn't it say in it, if it's two separate incidences?
Two prompted by distinct.
If it's two separate distinct incidences, then it would be another seventy-five dollars.
So, I mean, for the good of the county and trying to save the county money, is the three-hour call-out holds us accountable for the three hours, which the way, the way the policy is written right now, we're not accountable for, for the three hours, we're only accountable for the time that we're out. So, I mean, I don't know how many times Roman's been called out, you know, when he was, when he was a patrol guy. But if, if I go home at two o'clock and I get called out at two fifteen, let's say I'm out till three fifteen, and you've worked twelve hours, thirteen, fourteen hours, and your phone rings again, I am not very likely to be like, yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming back. If I'm held accountable, as, you know, as like I said, our, you know, current, you know, that you guys are abiding by, our current union contract that you guys have been, you know, in good faith covering, is we've, we've been getting paid the three-hour call-out. If it's a time card situation, maybe we should just not get, not get the, you know, over in the right-hand section for, you know, days and nights. I mean, if, if that's a thing, then we can drop that off instead of.
You mean this, the differential?
Yeah, what, what, I guess we're trying to figure out what, and I wasn't able to speak clearly of it, what stemmed this to start to take away the three-hour call-out?
Because they've, we've always done three-hour even from us when, in ninety-nine, when we had the union, that was, is three-hour call-out.
We just started the call-out, I don't know, since I've been commissioner.
When I was a deputy, we got called out for that.
Yeah, they did happen when I first got here, I implemented.
Yeah, Rome's the one that implemented.
I talked to John, I, I remember getting.
Well, they weren't doing it when I was commissioner here.
I'll have to ask him.
And I thought that was kind of too bad because they should be rewarded for answering the phone. So I think what, what triggered this was Lori was doing payroll and it was the hour for, was it, was it the shift differential?
No, it had nothing to do with shift differential, it was if you had automatically three-hour call-out. Plus you get the three hours, so then you have to get paid hour for hour for work, fair labor law. So technically, you're getting three hours overtime, plus three hours regular time.
No.
Yeah, that's the, this is what, Calanne, this is what spurred the change, was no, you have to pay them the three hours regular time, that has to go towards their hours, your hours worked for the week. So technically, you're getting double time and a half for those three hours. And then if it kicks you into overtime, say you work three hours, just three hours on Sunday, okay, on your regular day off, you put the three hours in your overtime. You get automatically three hours overtime. But then those three hours have to go towards hours worked.
Of the forty-hour.
Of the forty-hour work week. So then it would put you into another three hours overtime, so then you're getting triple time.
Yeah.
So it was, it was just a payroll nightmare.
I, I mean, I guess I don't, I don't agree with that because, like, if I work a twelve-hour day on Sunday, I put twelve hours regular time, if I get called out, I put three hours in overtime. I don't put fifteen hours over here, I only get paid in, I mean, anybody can look at my time card, everybody can look at my paycheck, I've never been paid triple time, it's just overtime. So I don't know where that's happened or how that confusion has happened, but on my time card, I work my twelve hours scheduled on Sunday. And then if I get called out, let's say I get called out at ten, I have a three-hour call-out, so my three-hour call-out is overtime, I don't put fifteen in hours worked, I only put twelve, and I've only been paid those twelve, not fifteen.
But it, but it's been confusing because then Calanne is this, okay, if she, he's, you've got your twelve-hour shift, those three hours overtime is hours worked. So.
So now you've worked fifteen hours.
So you've worked fifteen hours.
And three of those hours are overtime hours.
But then those three hours, then, you're at fifteen hours, well, then that is included in your hours worked, so then it puts you into overtime again.
I, I disagree.
Well, that's, that's the fair labor law because we even call McKenzie on it.
I mean, I.
But how does every other county that does this three, is McKenzie saying, which I will start calling around the other sheriffs, I'll send out an email as soon as I leave it to the other sheriffs, if they're, they've gotta be doing, as far as I know, everybody does this call-out stuff, maybe they don't, I'll find out, but how are they getting away with it? High Patrol does, how are they getting away with it? Because they're definitely not paying this triple pay, there's no way anybody would do that, that's crazy, I agree with you.
Fair labor law, and you have to be paid hour for hour.
Well, I think, I think maybe the example becomes more apparent is when, let's say it's a three-hour call, like it has been, but you only work one hour, you want to, you're off the road or whatever. So then, but it's three hours counted towards your forty-hour work week when you really only work one, so then what happens at the end of your work week? Yeah, you worked forty and you got your one, you know, you got your one hour actual overtime you worked, but it's showing as three because it's a three-hour call-out. And then at the end of the forty hours plus the three, then you do work another hour over for whatever. So now, the, those hours that you did not physically work are counting towards the forty-hour work, which will then multiply the effect of the one hour at the end of the work week. Does that make sense?
I mean, no, so what, what has always happened on our time, our time cards are confusing for a lot. But like I said, I work twelve hours on Sunday, I get called out, whether it be a half hour, hour, like, that automatically is in the overtime section. It doesn't, it doesn't get put over at hours worked, it gets put over just three-hour overtime right here. So let's say I work twelve hours, twelve hours and four hours, so that's forty, this is still, this is automatic overtime immediately. So it's still forty here and it's only three here, I don't get forty-three here, I only get three in overtime. So I don't get paid, nor have I ever been paid, like, triple time and a half, I, I think that's crazy and I would never, I would never come to you guys and ask for triple time and a half because I think that's crazy. But the way, the way that, you know, it is, and, yeah, I may only work an hour, okay, but I'm available for the next two. So that was kind of the caveat, and that's the caveat that Highway Patrol says is, yeah, you're not doing, you're, you're not maybe working all three hours, but the caveat of getting paid for the three is that you're available for call-out and you must, you must answer the phone.
Because that's how I was interested too, Ryan.
And if you don't answer the phone, then you're, you know, you can.
But that, but that one, okay, so you're called for three hours, call out for three, and you work just one hour.
Yep.
McKenzie and Calanne says, you have to put what, what hours you actually worked, so say you work twelve regular hours. And then later on, you were called out for three hours, but you worked one of those hours, I mean, you only worked one hour. That one hour has to then go into your hours worked, so it'd be thirteen.
Well, I guess the county owes me a lot of money then, because I've never been paid like that, so if that's, I mean, we can go back however far we need to go, but the county owes me a lot of money. I, Lori, I've never been, I've never been paid like that, ever.
This has just been.
Yeah, Calanne explained it to me last week, because I was doing my time sheets exactly how Brian is explaining it. So if I work, I work Monday through Friday from eight-thirty to four-thirty. So if I work two hours on Monday, I would put.
Oh, hey, are you able to come down real quick and we're trying to understand that hour where we call out overtime?
That's my forty and then the two gets entered in.
And we're talking to the sheriff's office, the deputy.
As overtime for the week. If I have a lot of equipment or I call in sick.
I don't really understand it, but.
That overtime gets turned back to regular time because you have to have your forty in before they can pay you overtime. What's happening now, the way she's doing it now, is it, so if I work twelve hours of Stone Garden overtime, that becomes, I work twelve hours on Sunday, then I start my eight hours on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. By Thursday afternoon, I'm already in overtime and Friday is completely overtime.
And that's the way I always was doing it before, when I was checking, okay, you get automatically three and, but then.
Yeah, I've never.
No, if they're working those hours, it has to go towards hours worked. So, I mean, the whole thing has just been so confusing that.
Yeah, I've never, I've never been paid.
Trying to clean it up.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's why I brought this up, because, you know, this is, the way the policy is written right now is saying is that we're required to.
Yeah, that should be, because nobody's required, not even the road department.
And so honestly, like, the way, the way that we've been doing it is, I believe, is huge cost, cost savings because now we're gonna be paying more money. I've never been paid, you know, the three hours of regular time on top of my overtime, I mean, like I said, I think that's crazy.
So Calanne, if Wayne comes out on his day off and does twelve hours overtime for Stone Garden, not part of his regular work week, it's just overtime right from the get-go, you're saying that that counts towards the forty-hour work week as well?
Yeah, because it's actually, it's hours worked, so he wouldn't be in overtime, like, on Sunday.
Until Friday?
Correct, yeah, so it would be twelve hours ra- regular, and then when he would hit that Thursday, then all the, probably the hours that he worked on Friday would all be in overtime. You have to physically work forty before you get overtime.
So, so Wayne's, Wayne's thing makes sense to me.
All right.
The part that doesn't make sense to me is, like I said, I mean, I'll say good faith, like, five hundred times, you guys in good faith have been abiding by our union contract, which our old union contract said that we got three hours of overtime for a call-out. So that's why even on Sunday, if I get called out before my shift, that's an automatic three hours of overtime, that doesn't count towards my hours worked. So just, so if I work, if I work my regular shift of noon to midnight, I get twelve hours of regular, regular time. If I get called out, I put three hours of overtime because it was a call-out and it's mandatory overtime per our union contract.
For answering the phone and go away.
For answering the phone. So I have twelve and I have three, I don't have fifteen, even if I work those three hours, I only have the three over here, which is automatic overtime.
Yeah, you do, you should have.
I've never been, I've never been paid that way.
Because there's really not very many situations where we have to do that, put it over here, it should go towards your hours worked.
But I, I guess I'm just saying.
You have to be compensated for the hours.
Well, then I guess.
That's the overtime thing.
But that's at one point five.
That's the three hours of overtime, at one point five immediately.
Why does it have to count towards hours work when it's already being compensated at one point five in overtime column? Yeah, why does the fair?
It's the, they just need, they need to be compensated for the hours worked.
Which we are, three hours of overtime.
I know, I'm just trying to rehash it now that we're talking about it, I don't quite understand why, though.
So we're being compensated by three hours of overtime, automatic, automatic, whether it be an hour, whether we work the three, we're being, we're already being compensated by the three hours of overtime automatically. And, I mean, my wife would be super happy because if you say that I need to get fifteen hours, then, I mean, I guess I get a big check at the end of the day because we need to go back and rehash all my call-outs because we get called out a lot. But I'm just saying, twelve and three is fifteen, I don't get fifteen here, I just get three dropped all the way down to overtime.
I'm thinking.
Okay, all right, I mean, and I, I guess that, that was the easiest, easiest way.
You know how Sanders County does it, by the way?
This is how Highway Patrol does it.
I don't know if they have call-out pay or not.
Yeah, that's why when I, but I didn't, I didn't think it was doing that.
I know most of the counties do have call-out pay, I just talked to one of the guys that handles all the sheriffs, even Gallatin County, they do a two-hour mandatory, they get paid and then they get a third hour for whatever, if it goes that far.
Right.
But they all do it, because I just said, are we doing?
Do they do it like she said, it has to count?
No, I said, it just, he said, it's just a normal, because it's usually in the union contract, it's the three-hour call-out you get. And I go, well, they're saying like, it's triple pay or it goes hours worked, and he's like, no.
And that's why it was always confusing when I gave the time cards, because I was always doing it, like, you get three hours, it doesn't go towards this part and it's going to that.
That's exactly how Highway Patrol does it.
The only thing I could see is if she's thinking that three hours until you hit forty doesn't turn into overtime yet.
Yeah, but, I mean, like.
But the contract says it's.
Automatic overtime.
Automatic overtime, whether you work forty or not.
Yep.
Okay.
Which.
If that's what the contract said, that's cool.
That's the way I always did it, and then I was told it had to go towards hours.
Well, let me follow up with these extra questions.
Which Roman, you guys, I mean, I. Tomatoes, tomatoes, right? If, if we still get the three hours for a call-out and it's not mandatory, like, automatic overtime, then we can put it in as fifteen here and it's gonna calculate the same way at the end of the week. I mean, tomatoes, tomatoes, I mean, it's one, one way or the other, it's gonna turn out the exact same way. So, I mean, if you guys are okay with us getting a three-hour call-out and not having it automatic overtime, which, which I'm an advocate of, I mean, because here's the thing, is I could work Sunday, and like, I'm gonna shoot myself in the foot and the deputies, like I said, may, may hate me, but I could work Sunday, twelve hours, get called out, already have three hours of overtime, and then I could call in sick all week, if I'm sick, and I still get overtime. So, I mean, if, if, if it's better for Calanne to put the fifteen hours here, would, instead of having automatic overtime, and it'd be overtime at the end of the week?
I thought the question was whether you were working the full three, was that the question earlier?
No, no.
Because if they were getting compensated for three but only working for one, because it was a call-out, you've got automatic three hours of overtime pay.
But then that one hour you said had to go in, two hours worked.
That's what we were talking about, we just wanted to know how many, because nothing was being documented on how many hours that they were actually working on the call-out.
Yeah, and that's what was being confusing is.
Because the union contract said we get paid for three.
That's right, but we don't, yeah, like, the actual hours worked, weren't being documented, so we really didn't know. That was what.
Well, because, I mean, I look at it as, I get paid the three hours, why do I have to document what three hours, you know, and I know it gets confusing with shift time differential, like, we could just knock the shift time differential off of the call-outs and not get paid shift time differential. But, I mean, the whole thing is, like, like I said, I mean, I, I bring good faith up like over and over and over and over, we're not unionized, but, I mean, very well, you know, if, if things keep getting, you know, tit for tat, like, stuff keeps getting taken away at some point in time, I mean, it's gotta stop.
It wasn't initiated to be a tit for tat, it was trying to make a better sense of this hours worked then, and like you said, in the end, actually, it could benefit you, tit for tat ends up being more money. We were just trying to streamline with FL, you know, Fair Labor Standards Act and the hours, keeping track of hours, we weren't trying to take anything away, in fact, we thought it would bolster your pay, but the confusion is still.
But I mean, I think this is way more confusing.
Yeah, so.
And it actually will, because like I was telling Calanne, if we call Ryan out for a PFMA and he takes an hour and a half to get through it and he goes home, and then twenty minutes later, so he gets a city fellow call-out and it's time, then fifteen minutes later, we have a fire and we call him, he's getting another seventy-five dollars, we're coming back out.
For two separate.
And the probability of me working my, and the probability of me coming out, working myself into a grave is probably not very good. But if I'm held accountable by the three-hour call-out, I have to come out, like, it's not a question of whether I come out, I have to come out. And I've been called out three times within a three-hour period and it sucks, but with the three-hour call-out, I'm held liable for those three hours, so I must come out.
No, there's, there's good, yeah, we're not, we're not even, those are great reasons, the only thing is we're trying to figure out this hour for hour, physical work, forty-hour work week in the Fair Labor Standard, just to make it so, there's not that confusion, but if we can, if I, if I can talk to McKenzie and say, well, hey, because there are, you can have agreements in the language that, that supersedes or overrides or makes a variance, if you will, on the Fair Labor Standard, I mean, you know, it used to be an eight-hour work day and you can contract ten or twelve-hour work day. So let me re-ask her with a little more, maybe I'll have you sit by me, Calanne, and we can get down to the, you know, the bone marrow, if you will, of what this issue is and see.
We're not trying to make things protocol.
No, I meant I would have come in when we had it on the agenda as a call-out discussion, so that when we got the policy handbook ready, it's a good thing Don, Don was ready to order new policy handbook. Got the policy handbook ready, it's a good thing Don, Don was ready to order new policy handbooks.
And, and so, I mean, like, like I said, I've never been paid the triple time and a half and nor do I think that's, that's acceptable for me. I mean, we've always just been paid the three-hour overtime, so whether it is be at the beginning or the end, like, you know, regular time worked. I mean, either way, it computes to the three hours of overtime and I don't get paid fifteen for the twelve.
And that's the way I always thought. Then it got, got come down to, okay. How many of those three hours did you actually work? Because that has to go into. And, and that's where it was coming from. So I always thought, okay, you get three hours, period, done. And then your regular shift, whatever. And then, but then it came up, no, you, you have to be compensated for hours worked, so. It ended up just kinda being a big mess, it's okay, now who's actually putting the three hours and then are they adding it to this? Aren't they adding it to this? And it was, I mean, it was just confusing trying to do time cards, so.
Well, I, like I said, I've never been paid for the triple time and a half, but if you have to, then, I mean, I'll take the money.
To me, this makes sense, I guess.
I do too. I mean, I always thought it was two, is just put three hours, if you're on a call-out, you put three hours under the overtime. Period, call-out, call-out, that's how we know. Yeah, that's it. It's just a three-hour call-out. And then if you worked a twelve-hour shift, whether you, it ended up being fifteen hours that you worked. You just put your twelve hours in the regular time and then that's your, it's your regular time. And if you get. Say on Sunday, you had a three-hour call-out and then on Wednesday, it's a three-hour ca- it's a, it's that, you're just getting paid for those three hours. Period, overtime.
Well, and, and I put my, my regular, regular scheduled shift in the big line and then I put in parentheses, call-out. And then I put the three hours up above.
Right, and it's, like I said, some.
Question is, is how many hours you were, you were really working.
Yes, but, but if they.
When it comes down to it.
And that's kind of, that was where the fair labor law came in, is you have to be paid for physically hours worked. So, I, I mean, I would, I would rather do it just a three-hour overtime call-out, whether you worked half an hour, hour. Whatever, it's just a three hour and then your, whatever your shift was, whatever you worked or whatever. Is in your regular.
And that's where the stipend came in.
And that, and so that's why we ended up going to the stipend, because it would eliminate that whole hours worked type thing.
But like I said, the sheriff's office is unique in the, in the idea of. We got called out multiple times, you know, we could, we could get called out five times, um, and get seventy-five dollars apiece for every call-out. But there's no accountability, um, and I think it's a disservice to, you know, the community is, you know, a lot of times. I mean, I think for several weeks, I was the only one working my side of the shift, so. You guys gotta understand that for twenty-four hours a day, I worked twelve of it, I was on call for twelve hours. I was a beat dog after, after two weeks, cuz I'd get called out at six o'clock in the morning, I'd try to go home and get some sleep. Cuz I'd have to work at noon, then I'd get called out at ten o'clock in the morning, and then I'd get off at midnight and I'd get called out at two o'clock in the morning. At, at some point in time, it, it wears us down and like the seventy-five dollars doesn't hold us accountable for keep coming out. Cuz at some point, we're gonna get tired.
And I think it has to be consistency, because there was some, okay, they had. Three hours overtime and then they had fifteen, but then their thing was, I mean. That's what I'm saying, is it has to be consistent.
Can we ever have a conversation about changing the time cards? Get into a new system?
I don't know if it was Micah or A J or whoever came up with the sheriff's office time card, so.
Well, not the time card, but they had a little overtime thing.
Well, I mean, their whole time card's different than the other ones. So if you go, and, and that's what I told, told, said before, if you guys can come up with a time card that. Makes sense would be great.
Yeah, we thought that was a county time card.
You, they, sheriff's office created that. Our can, our time cards are nothing like that.
So I guess. Like the old ones? Well, those are even worse.
No, they're fine, because we don't have the shift if, we don't have all that stuff.
So I guess.
I don't know, is this, is it something that we can. Agree on?
For what?
As far as, like. Don't, don't worry about putting ti- hours worked in the.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just.
Cuz for the last three and a half years.
Everybody's being compensated.
So this is the three-hour call-out?
That's all.
Yep. For the last three and a half years, I've never got triple time and a half, I've always just got the overtime. And then my regular time worked overtime, and that's what every deputy said.
And I, I don't care what we do, doesn't matter to me.
You know, I just, you know, it was brought up, no, you have to put your hours worked, you, you know, because of the fair labor law or whatever.
Could affect the deputies, the road department, Andy and Norm.
Well, I think anybody that's, yeah.
Now, the road department, when they get called out, they stay out just to plow the roads.
Usually they are. But sometimes even when it's not winter time, there'll be a, a windstorm and the tree will blow down and block Mullen Road or whatever. And they'll, and they'll just go out for an hour with a chainsaw, remove it and then back home. So it, it can happen, happen that way too, but.
So I guess as far as the sheriff's office, I would say required needs to be removed and.
Well, as you say, go back to the old system.
We'll continue.
Well, we want to, we just wanna make sure that we're not violating any, so I'll ask Mackenzie if we can have an agreement.
Well, if she argues, ask her how every other county's doing it then.
Well, I mean, contact Montana Highway Patrol, cuz like I said, they've been doing that for twenty years.
That's why I put this in place, cuz I didn't think it was a problem, yeah, cuz that's how I did it.
You would think if anybody'd see it as a problem, it's state of Montana would. Okay.
No, I, I, I thought, I mean, that's the way I always, and then, you know.
Money grows on trees for the state.
It would be much simpler.
Um, so.
So then, okay, so then, say.
I'll just pay you whatever.
You tell me what to pay and I will. So then, you know, I, do you still put in for the shift differential then on that overtime?
So, our, our conver- our conversation that we had. You and I talked about, cuz that was the, that was like the super confusing thing. I would, I, I would say that if it's a three-hour call-out, it's the call-out. And we don't put in shift time differential, because it's already covered with the overtime.
And, and especially since you may not be working three hours.
And that would be the like, super confusing, super, like, one point two six four, you know, it's like, just don't put it over there.
I got a three-hour call-out, but I only worked one hour, so only fifty cents.
And it's been confusing, that some of them put, okay, this is my shift, and then this is call-out and then some of them. Not every time card is the same and it just gets so darn confusing.
Just, just know when it's a call-out, it's not gonna be over at the shift.
Right, it should be, it just should be your, in the shift differential, it should add up to what your hours worked. Period.
Yep, I'm good with that. Do you wanna go to the next thing? I mean, we, we, I guess we only got eleven minutes by the agenda, so I'm just trying to keep with the agenda. So.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Cal.
Thanks, thanks, Calan, I'm gonna bring your name up here in a second. So, like, like the sheriff said, you know, when, when the sergeant thing initially, you know, was brought to you guys. Governor Gianforte hadn't signed, signed, you know, into legislature this, that comes into October first. I may have a copy of it if you guys wanna check that out. Um, so deputies can make up to ninety-five percent, under sheriff goes to ninety-eight percent. And, and talk with the sheriff is, with my duties as sergeant, I mean. I'll toot my horn, I, I think I'm a huge asset and I have a lot of knowledge and, you know, I take care of a lot of stuff that normally patrol deputies don't do. In calculating my hours, hours worked and overtime. The sergeant, um, additional cert pay, it's getting about forty-two cents. Per se, per hour, but not per hour. Now that I can make up to ninety-five percent, I'm not asking for ninety-five percent, it would be nice, but. I talked to Calan and if the sheriff, sheriff is given four percent this year, um, my base instead of. My base would go up to twenty-one ninety-three. If the sheriff's only given three percent, my base would go to twenty-one seventy-three, that would be less than a dollar an hour. So with that being said, is, is you're giving dispatchers, dispatch supervisors, um, a dollar an hour. And so I'm not even asking for that. So you're giving two dispatch supervisors a dollar an hour. Which would compute to two dollars an hour for one dispatch supervisor. So, I mean, I'm just looking for like comparability and. Like, structure of how, you know, I look at as dispatch supervisor, they, they're supervising people, you know, in a box per se. You know, the danger's not there, like, life and, life and limb calls aren't there, and not necessarily I make those, but. Sometimes I have to reach out, but if it's an immediate situation that I have to put my guys in, then I have to make that decision. And I think it's a very, very important decision and, I mean, I'm available and willing and able to make that decision. But I just look at, you know, different positions within the sheriff's office and how things are being paid now. And, I mean, I, I believe I deserve to be paid, you know, hourly compensation rather than just that stipend, especially now that I can be. So like I said, it's not even a dollar an hour for me. So, I mean, I'm looking at dispatch, there's two of them for a dollar an hour.
I think it's the sheriff's decision, you know, I mean.
Well, it's his recommendation.
It's my recommendation.
If it was a sheriff's decision, he could go around and make every deputy.
That's what I'm saying though, is, is his rec.
If the finances, cuz I know you guys gotta wait for financials, stop. If the financials, if, if we can do it. Then yes, I think ninety-three percent is, is reasonable for a sergeant position in a sheriff's office and. And that gives us leeway over the years, whatever. The dollar to the, the dispatchers, that is because they get paid so low anyways. So, you know, we're just trying to get them at a decent. Living wage, but, um, yeah, I think ninety-three, I support the ninety-three and.
What does that translate into then? You said you did the math, what if three percent?
So, if, if the sheriff gets four percent, it would put me at a base of twenty-one ninety-three and I believe I'm like twenty-one, right around twenty-one, twenty-one oh six.
Right now.
Three percent, it would give me twenty-one seventy-three compared to the twenty-one oh six.
So, hold, hold on, you'd get, you, what four percent are you talking about? So, the wa- wage raise they're gonna give me? Okay, yeah, so, if I get that. That's, you guys get ninety percent of the four percent, and then you're gonna get, then you're, so you'd get ninety percent of that. And then you wanna, then you get the three percent above that.
Yeah. So at the four percent raise, ninety-three percent of his base pay would be forty-nine thousand fifty-three fifty-two. So that would put me at twenty-one ninety-three plus my longevity. Three percent of his base at forty-eight thousand six hundred one point zero eight. It would put me at a base of twenty-one seventy-three plus longevity.
You're, you're saying if I don't get the four percent at all. That makes sense. Yeah, I recommend if you do, if we can do it, that, and get him off that cert pay, cancel the sergeant cert pay and switch to this in October.
October one.
When it takes over, would be my recommendation. Ryan's been an asset to us, um, with a lot of things and. And the guys, um, lean on him and he's an F T O too, and we get cert pay for that and stuff, but, um, yeah, I think it's worthwhile.
Well, when I was promoted, back in the day, the, the sergeant got a three percent pay increase. I don't know what it is now, but.
Ten percent.
Really?
Five dollars an hour Montana Highway Patrol gets.
Can I go back on duty?
Yeah, so, um, high, Montana Highway Patrol gets a ten percent increase, which equates to five dollars an hour for their sergeants. Their sergeants make thirty-two or thirty-three bucks an hour.
I got like a whopping thirty-five cents an hour raise when I went to billing the sergeant.
And they make more than the sheriff.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I did my legwork, promise, so.
No, I, I, I'm good with it, you know, as long as the sheriff and undersheriff support it, then I'm all for it.
Yeah, cuz in the past, sergeants have kind of been just a title or just a status thing and there wasn't really any real work involved. And if the sheriff and undersheriff are saying this is actually a legitimate promotion with work involved and responsibility involved, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I've been doing that for about a year. But, you know, and, and I, I bring over thirteen years of experience and I know, you know, the past sergeant that was promoted. He was here for a year when he was promoted to sergeant, so, I mean, I bring a lot to the table, so.
And we appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Fastest response time I've seen to the bank.
Yeah, yeah, and there was a semi in my way.
So we will, uh, we will know our true valuation of a mill probably next month and then we'll know exactly what we're being able to do for pay. And whatnot, so if it can be accomplished, I guess we're in agreeance that we will try to make that happen for Ryan.
Do we need to have Jessica bill that?
Plug that in, yeah, remove the cert and plug in the ninety-three and see what.
Do you want this, do you want this, I can give you guys this, I got it from, I got it from Calan yesterday, so.
Oh, I'll take it, Ryan, then if I talk to Jessica, I'll, I'll, then we'll know what I'm talking about, alright. Okay?
Alright.
Alright, so. October one, so we, we will for sure know by October one what we're doing with that, so.
And then with this call-out thing. Why can't it just be our.
That's what I'm gonna ask.
Our decision as to what we do for call-out.
I mean, they make their own agreements in, in contracts for, you know, an eight-hour day or holiday pay or all that stuff, so I.
I mean, if we wanted. I just think that we should be able to.
Probably is where, how we're recording it, we only be on the same page.
Right, and that, yeah, and.
And we clarified that with the shift difference, there's no shift differential in that.
I didn't know we had the option of changing the time card. If we can change the time card, I guess, and bring, and show example and. Calan signs off on it, then we will put our heads together and we're coming up with a different time.
Task for a sergeant, come up with a better time card.
Oh, we need to, it's.
To be. Consistency is the big. Patrick does it another way, so-and-so does it another way, and I think consisten- so, when I get to preview payroll, it's like.
Did you say when you get to? Oh, goodie, I get to pay.
Well, and, and, you know, I think that's the thing where we sit down, like, you know, give like a scenario, like, give hours worked and. Have people work through their time card, maybe at one of our patrol meetings, and then say, okay, why'd you do it this way? Like, it needs to be done this way, and, you know, we're checking time cards. Um, I usually check my guys' time cards on my side of the schedule before they get to, get to weighing. But it's like, it's one of those things, I mean, it's, it's been chaotically busy. But, you know, we, we try to do the best, but, you know, I think it's just the easiest not to put in a shift time differential, cuz that's the confusing portion for me. I mean, now we actually got it to where we can type in the date at the bottom for the last day and it'll actually like self-populate. Cuz before we had to go seven twenty-one, go up seven twenty, go up seven nine. It took us a long time, so at least now everything like, you know, self-populates.
And your shift differential should add up.
Add up to your hours worked.
The time worked.
Yep, yep.
And, and the three hours, I guess the three hours, say it's a three hours call-out overtime. Shouldn't be, you know, in the overtime at the bottom.
Maybe, maybe we can make another.
So it's not part of overtime.
So it's not in the overtime box.
It's a three-hour call-out box instead of an overtime.
We can make that happen.
Just that first paragraph there tells you that, I'll let you interpret.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Well, it's, it says you must be paid overtime for every hour worked over forty.
Right, which they do.
That's, that's understandable.
I just went to that, I went to the fair standards labor act, so that they could just.
Three hours, three hours of.
But it's still compensated.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, we'll try to get to the bottom of that.
Alright.
Anyway, yeah, I'm.
If there's something comes up for next meeting, let them know and they'll come and show it.
Cards easier. Doing time cards easier, rather than paying three hours to preview payroll.
I'll be back in a second.
She'll be fine, not a.
It's, she's got a washman in her chest, it's called, and it's glitching, so they're gonna go into it.
Oh, okay.
79.
I guess any kind of surgery.
The biggest part problem is the shift differential.
Down there, Mark?
Because sometimes.
Oh, down where?
You know, what they put, okay, work from this time to this time.
And I might call out another deputy.
But then.
I don't think.
It doesn't add up to their hours worked, you know.
So, so I think primarily, because I don't use the shift differential box, you probably see, you know, a lot of people put like what shift they work, and like swings or days, and they, you know, they put.
Oh, yeah, I don't even look at that.
So, we're gonna, we'll take that box out, and that'll be the call-out box.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll just put 3, 3, 3, you know.
Yeah, you don't have to put the total over here at the side, because it's gonna be totaled at the bottom.
Perfect, done, done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, guys.
FEP, what's it stand for again, acronym girl?
Of course you're gonna ask me that. Something about public health, emergency preparedness, that's what it is, public health, emergency preparedness, so all of the stuff that we do to help get the community in line for any kind of emergency preparedness stuff, that's what that is.
Sounds like we're almost in an emergency now with our upticks, huh?
Yeah, you know, I was laughing, Mary goes, what's on your wrist, I'm like, well, there was gonna be a lot of people in, I was putting it on, because it's, we're back in it now where we're just needing to be extra careful, because we are in an upswing right now, so.
And upswing is primarily due to this new variant Delta?
I don't know if it's due quite to that, they're seeing it, Amy's texted out, said that there were, you know, the three that were sent out to the other labs, because they just randomly test that there was that Delta variant in it, I just think, you know, we all got really comfortable, and then it's still just kind of there.
There are so many people.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a lot of people, we have.
You know, the travel center down there, that used to be a weekend thing to see a crowd like that, it's daily now.
All the time.
And worse than it ever was.
Yeah, I mean, it's packed, you know, and so just again, reminding people to wash their hands, social distance, wear your mask when you're in crowded places, indoor or outdoor, and just, you know, if you don't feel well, stay home, that's the big stuff, and, you know, hopefully, and always encouraging employers to take care of our people, and say if you don't feel well, you shouldn't come in, and I think all of those things are all we can do right now in hopes of preventing, you know, so, that's the big stuff. But, yeah, so, really, the grant itself, and this is just another extension because of the different monies coming out, this is a different portion of it, sorry Jen gave me, I gotta see where I'm at, wrong side of papers, she gave me a quick email, and she just said, you know, it's an amendment to the established FEP contract, new funding totaling $65,129 over a two-year period to hire what they call a congregate living coordinator to assist with COVID response and FEP plan revisions, if approved, she plans to hire either a one-part-time employee, 14 to $18-ish per hour if no health insurance, or a one-part-time employee approximately $12 to $13 an hour with the health insurance covered by the grant, so, we're just kind of seeing where we're at with that, but really, she just needed you guys to approve that, and be okay with us moving forward with that grant money, it'll just help us more in the office with all this COVID coverage and what we're having to do with that, and helping get people what they need in those times, so, that's the ask.
All right, so it's really not any money from us, it's just a new agreement for us to get more money from them?
Yes, yep.
Well, we can't argue with that, especially if it helps out the county.
Good, well, that's good to hear, yes.
So, we have it as action, and since it is a new contract, and we're all here, we might as well move somehow for.
That is a good question.
Do we still have?
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I did not have it, I apologize, sorry.
Oh, here it is, right here.
Perfect.
So what do you have there?
Oh, that's for clerk and recorder, but I do have, we have a grant that we've already been a part of, we're just entering into year two of it, and it was just our substance use prevention grant specifically for families prenatal to age 3, it's $5,000, and I have an MOU for this year, if we can.
Okay, just another extension.
Yes, exactly, and I've already got it all filled out for you, Mr. Zalaway, I just need a signature on it, so.
Wow, you say that beautifully.
Oh, thank you.
I'm used to Zalaway or Zulu or something.
I'll sign it quite. Enough of your peoples to say it correctly.
That's right.
April 11 is that one? Okay, so I will make a motion to approve Task Order Amendment Number 3, Task Order for FEP, Task Order Number 20-07-6-11-035-0.
I would second that motion.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 We'll sign it, and then, again, I'll move that we go ahead and sign this one too, which is another, just an extension of the SVD Prevention Efforts to Early Childhood Coalition Project Memorandum of Understanding for $5,000.
I'll second that one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Neat part of that one this year, we just got done hosting a workshop this last week on starting, we did crisis mapping, so, got together a bunch of our different organizations and people in our community to identify what we have available for crisis response, and then kind of mapping out what our current path usually looks like, as well as finding some of the gaps and holes that we need to work on, but we had a really great turnout, we had some of our police officers, Officer Funk came also with their new officer, Josie.
Oh, yeah.
And, and then there was one more of the officers, but I can't remember his name off the top of my head, that joined us, and then our CVAs and some of our other programs and the schools and the hospital, and it was a really good turnout, and so it's all coming from things we're working on on that grant with the sub-stuff, as far as just building better supports and resources in our community and making the ones we have more robust and work better together, so, it's been good, a lot of good things coming out of it.
Yeah.
And I'll grab the one I just had Roman sign back from you, Don, is that okay, and I'll send it to you via.
Here's the other one. I just need a title, so I'll put it in the minutes.
And I'll scan it and then send it to you guys.
Will you do that, do you get that today?
Yep, oh, send it as soon as I get back to the office.
Okay, then I'll wait till you.
Okay.
Let me write that down really quick.
Thank you, guys, very much, and then, can you send me a signed copy of the FEP contract, or do I need to take that with me and scan that to you as well?
We can do it either way.
Whatever works best, I'm trying to just take it with me and scan it to you if that works.
Yep, then I'll have both pieces of that one.
Perfect. And then put that in our book.
Did you hear how perfect we were?
Yes, simultaneous perfects.
That's right.
But what else is new?
You know, just plugging along, it's been a little warm and smoky this summer, so, just not getting outside as much as I want to, because it doesn't feel so good.
Is that part of yours, or did I, oh, maybe they're just together here.
Yeah, looks like it is, so, yeah, what about you guys, anybody been fishing or enjoying vacations?
I haven't gone anywhere, just to Helena a couple times.
Grandkids are doing okay?
Yep.
They doing any camps or special stuff over the summer?
Oh, Amber girls are, yeah, they have basketball camps and big sky games and billings.
Very good, that's wonderful. Have you been over to Idaho at all to see the other kids over there? Are they liking it over that way?
She comes home a lot, he bought a raft, so, you know, he used to guide for Western waters.
Oh, I know, I had Wyatt take me out.
So he had to buy his own raft, in fact, he's coming over today again to give some of his in-laws and friends from Idaho rides down the river.
Very fun, well, good, tell them I said hi.
I will.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you.
You guys have a wonderful day.
Doing a tour of.
Yeah, yeah, I read that.
So we're starting public comment, were you waiting long on us?
Uh, since about a quarter after 11.
Oh, geez.
It's not bad, I went up to my office up there, did a little bit there. Okay, real quick, what, the TV board again, and I just kind of wanted to know an updated information of what Mako is talking about for as far as us spending the money and where it's to go, and again, in that bill, communication is one of the main parts of that bill, which is homeland security, and that's where, I mean, we need to hit them hard and heavy. We've got a tree that's fallen down over the road that we're gonna go up and remove the tree, me and Kelly are go up there and do that, and our, we hired a young man to come on up there and give us a hand doing it, because there's no way us two old farts are gonna be able to move that tree out of the way after we cut it up, but, that's part of the deal there, I just wanted to let you know and fill you in what we're doing. I'm gonna check with the Forest Service to make sure we can get a key to get in there, or at least the combination for the lock. 23 for our TV people out here, they're not getting, because it was placed upon a tree, and it's not working, it hasn't worked since it's been put up there, so I talked with Tim Reed last night, and I told him, I gotta get Jeremy back up there and fix that, these people that paid for that, they deserve it, let's get it done, so, if worse comes to worse, I'll move the damn tree.
So right now they're getting 8 and 13, just not the 23.
Yeah, so, we'll find a way, we're gonna get it done.
Okay, and then regarding your federal funds for helping out, and then of course, it might be worth asking someone else, but the person I talked to at Mako said he thought it would not be applicable, because, one, the ARPA money is, that's theirs for sewer and water treatment and infrastructure, and the broadband portion that's out there is primarily for internet computer broadband, and so he thought that it would be a really hard sell to make the TV.
I don't think so, if you throw in the communication for disaster and emergency services, it's our communication, if the cable systems and the satellite which shut down all the time, that's the only form of communication our local public have. I mean, we gotta put it straight out that way.
Emergency broadcast.
Because getting radio out here is another questionable subject matter, except for we can get St. Regis once in a while, which is, yeah. Hit and miss. Yeah, it's kind of hit and miss on that too, so, I am looking at it as a DES situation.
Okay, well, I will re-ask my person with a little bit more on the emergency broadcast system angle, but, like I said, you know, you could ask, I could ask, you ask someone too, because sometimes people have different opinions.
Well, yeah, if you look at it this way, is that Mako is an advisor, not a rule-maker.
Right.
And we have the right to decide of which way would best be spent for our community. But that's not true on any of those federal funds, Gordon, because they tell you, you look at our Title III money with the Forest Service. Yeah. That's our money. Yeah. They'll tell you that, that's the county commissioner discretion, tell you get to the point that, hey, we wanna do this with it, oh, no, no, you can't do that with us. Well, you can do it, but you pay it back. Well, here's the deal also, is that we owe, how much money do we owe still, the TV board back to the county?
I don't remember.
I think it's, what, $6,000 maybe left, or no, not even six, I think, it's, we paid half, I think, and with the money that we got through that, we could also pay back that part of that loan, and that would bring money back to you again. And that would clear the loan out, so that's, that's another avenue that we're looking at it that way too, because, whatever we can do to get this done, that's, that's my main goal.
And the money that you need right now, what amount and for what exactly, you got, you got 8 and 13 running, but now you still need.
23.
Some money to move that antenna for 20, and then somebody has to move a tree, you said that.
Yeah, we gotta move that tree, that, that's, so we can get there, it's kind of blocked the road, it took roots and all the good thing, yeah, it's a big one, so.
Is it a good piece of firewood tree?
I think so.
Ponorosa pine?
My buddy was supposed to be here, right here, but I don't see him, Mr. Kelly, he must have forgot or thought I was gonna call him again, but I talked to him last night, but that's, that's where we sit, and with the TV board.
What do you think it'll cost, what kind of money are you thinking?
Well, that's, that's, I'm waiting for Tim to give me the final approach, but I wanna make sure that we've got the door open, you know, we're not gonna ask for much.
Well, and if it's not for much, and we can't get the ARPA money or whatever to fit, I mean, maybe there's still a chance we could help out if we could.
Yeah.
Find out what our money is.
I just, I hate the fact that we have to borrow it, because then, you know, it's back to the taxpayers having to pay it back again, even though they're already paying, so it just, yeah, I haven't gone through your, your books or anything to see where your money's going or anything, and that's, that's up to you guys, you know.
It's kind of, kind of complicated and confusing, so if you can figure it out.
Yeah, trust me, I had my fill of that as mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
For many years, and then doing all the money spending at the Capitol, theirs.
Yeah, there's a bigger matrix there.
Oh, my God, yeah, that's, that's a real matrix. Okay, and then, closing out on the TV board, the car action, the auction that's gonna be going down, I've been working with Mike on that and Deb, and we're going to, you've got two cars out here you want gone, okay, that's gonna go for auction.
Right.
And I've got all the patrol cars that are out there, I think there's four, maybe five, and they're gonna go, and I've got an old trailer, and we've got a ski-doo thing, and a few other items, matter of fact, the BMW, we finally got that all taken care of, so, we have to go with the judge and have him just sign that it's okay for us to do that, and Deb is in the process of working on that, so, I am gonna start advertising here, probably when I get back from my little bit of a vacation, I'll be back on Thursday, so then I'll meet with you guys to run across, let you know what we're putting in on the auction, and get an okay to put it in the paper.
Did you get with Jason too, because I think he might have a water truck or something?
I've asked Jason, and I've asked him to, so, I'm sticking her on him.
I will.
Both, yeah, whoever, yeah, and so we can get that listed, the more we get, the better it is for us, all right, and that's kind of an update on that, and I've been working with Helen and Mike on finding evidence in the evidence room in there for cases, so, so far I've had pretty good luck, so I'm gonna go through and reevaluate the whole evidence room, and go case by case, and check with Helen on each case to see where we stand, and write the information on each one, where we stand with it, and that'll give you an update too. So you're getting your money's worth out of me?
I know, I appreciate your volunteerism, because.
Yes, we really appreciate.
Nothing really started moving until you decided to step in.
Yeah, I'm kind of like a bull in a china shop.
Well, thank you, Gordon.
Yeah, thanks, Gordon. Poor Deb, she's kind of aggressive, and I have to spit back a little bit, you know how that goes.
Cool.
Hi, well, keep us posted on the TV thing.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys at least listening to me and taking this information down, because the people, I've been getting a lot of calls from TV people out there, and they're complaining, and they're a little ticked, and I don't blame them, they're paying for it, and I'm trying to cool their jets a little bit, so keep them off your back, and try and get this done.
Okay.
So, and information that you could put out in the paper. So, and information that you can put out in the paper or anything like that, and if you do, keep it word, it's working.
We're running an ad, if you have a problem, call Gordon, eight-two-two.
There you go.
Oh, they have no problem already.
All right.
They have no problem calling.
Let's keep it that way.